All rise for the pledge. Sal, can you lead us in the pledge, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces, our first responders, our veterans, those fighting the good fight in the Ukraine, and may the memories of the high school student that passed, may his memory be eternal, and prayers of comfort and for a healing for all of those that are currently in the hospital due to the accident. Thank you.
Just let me read the pledge.
Oh, Mary K. Creed, yes.
Carry on if you'd like. I believe in the United States of America as a government of the people, by the people, for the people, whose just powers are derived from the consent of the government, a democracy in a republic, a sovereign nation of many sovereign states, a perfect union, one and inseparable, established upon those principles of freedom, equality, justice, and humanity for which American patriots sacrificed their lives and fortunes. I therefore believe it is my duty to my country to love it, to support its constitution, to obey its laws, to respect its flag, and defend it against all enemies.
Sal, public participation.
Mr. Anastas. Hello. My name is Mike Anastas. I live on Lake Point Drive. And it's not easy to get up here and speak, but I feel somebody should bring some information to you. The future of the East Street School and the John Pettibone School is becoming clear. It looks like Republicans plan to let the buildings fall so far into disrepair, the only choice is to demolish them, and that is a shame. But there's another way to look at this. First, put the East Street School up for sale, with the proviso that the historic facade and artistic details be preserved. It's called a gut renovation. That's what they did with my house in Westchester. According to an article in the September 2018 Danbury News Times, which I have here, Dakota Partners offered $1.6 million to do just that. Certainly, there are other developers who would jump at the chance to build much-needed housing apartments in downtown New Milford. It would be a waste of time and money to conduct more studies. Look at it this way: because in 2019, the town used a state grant of $20,000 to conduct a study of East Street School. Piri and Associates, which was not released to the public, specifically described the condition and costs of restoration, which were astronomical. Why do you want more studies? Why repeat it? You already have the information that it's not, it's just outside of our possibility. Second, John Pettibone School is an ideal place to locate the Board of Education, as well as community spaces. There's plenty of parking and many acres for sports fields. Bringing Pettibone up to code would be a smart investment, but there is a big problem. The mayor says, quote, "It is better to build new than to try to retrofit old," close quote. If he does not see restoring Pettibone, what does he see? What is the vision for Pettibone? All this is to say, New Milford needs a master plan for all its properties. Let's stop debating and delaying and create a plan. Lastly, when these properties were discussed at the last town council meeting, the Republican councilmen over there interrupted and bullied the Democrat councilwomen here in the meanest, rudest manage, manner imaginable. It was hard to watch, and no one interrupted, not the mayor, not the sergeant-at-arms, and or even the parliamentarian who joined the fray. Please, gentlemen, remember you were elected to serve the public, not bully the ladies who represent the other side. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. No more. Thank you. Katie?
I'll move to item number four. I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda items for A, prior minutes, and for B, tax collector.
Sorry? Mayor?
Yes.
I was just point of order. Can I ask a question about this? I would like to know why the item that I submitted on 9/27 was not added to the agenda. So I went back and I read our town charter, and the town charter states very clearly that, I'm going to try to find it here, "Said agenda shall contain all items submitted to the mayor by any member of the town council or by the mayor within the time limits prescribed the rules procedures adopted by the town council." So that was given to you in writing. We had to postpone our last meeting because of the tragedy on Route 7.
Correct.
And that you wanted to attend vigil. I first objected to canceling that meeting and pushing it off a week, so I wasn't the one of five that I guessed you got in order to move that meeting. And then I specifically asked for this to be on the agenda so that this council could talk about the most pressing issue facing the town right now, in my opinion. We cannot let another person die on that road, right? So the reason I'm saying point of order is that I was going by the process, but it's not on the agenda, so I just want to...
Absolutely. Two things. One is I wanted the agenda to be exactly as it was for the first agenda, so that we couldn't get anybody from the public stating that we are doing this in the darkness of night, because we've had people come up here and say that. We're going to have plenty of time at the next meeting to talk about the traffic incident, and we're going to have a lot of information with that, as I'm going Wednesday to the DOT to talk to them, to find out more information. Also, Wednesday evening right here, for those that are watching on TV, we're having a public meeting, and I hope all of us can attend, where we can hear from the public and get their input, so that we can properly talk about this, as you say, and I agree, a very, very important topic for us all.
But that is not, as you well know, that is not an official meeting. That is not a council, a town council meeting.
Correct.
That is something very different.
The council meeting would be next.
So this is an official town council meeting.
Correct.
I followed the rules, and I presented an agenda item to you. Our town charter says...
Did you read the entire, the entirety of it?
The entire what?
The entirety of the policy, rules, and procedures. Did you read the whole thing?
Of our charter?
Of what you just specified as to have it on the agenda. And what does it exactly say?
Okay, it says, "Said agenda shall contain all items submitted to the mayor by any member of the town council or by the mayor within the time limits prescribed by the rules of procedure adopted by the town council, provided that such items are submitted in writing."
Correct.
"The agenda shall set forth each item in full, or at the discretion of the mayor, may describe any such item in a brief summary." So my specific request to you was, I would like to know, my specific thing was, I would like to discuss the safety of Route 7. That was it. Route 7 safety was the agenda item submitted. So you could have shortened it, you could have said seven safety, or, you know, certainly that's within your discretion, but to me, this says that was to go on the agenda.
Well, the discretion means whether it be on the agenda or not. Is that correct, Randy?
No.
That depends upon what your rules say. So I don't know what the town council rules say, but there were town councils that gives discretion to the mayor along with that language.
Then it would be discretionary.
Thank you.
This should be on the next agenda.
Yes, it will be.
It's two, it's three weeks after the situation. That is not, that is not how this council is supposed to operate. First of all, this, it is, it is outside the bounds of how you're supposed to operate. I put this on the agenda. I don't understand...
Okay, so, hang on, Chris?
So it should be added.
Okay, so, I think Councilwoman Ram said the issue. Can we move on, on our agenda?
I would, so can I make a motion in this special meeting? I mean, I can't, we can't add it to the, we can't add it. So let it be known, that I, let it be known to the town that I tried to put this on tonight's agenda, because I think it is the most important thing that this council should be discussing right now. Thank you.
And to just put my comments in, so to speak, is, it is so important that we need to have the proper information. We need to be able, as a town council, to have the information to make the decisions that we need to make, not in an emotional decision, not in a way without having information. It's not the proper way to do it. So to me, we're going to have more information from the Connecticut DOT, after the, after our town delegation and myself meet with the commissioner and the DOT. Also, we're going to hear from the public themselves to find out what they're, what they want, hear from their input, what they're upset about, which we all know is traffic and the unfortunate accidents. The chief will also be here. He's collecting data. We'll have all of that for Monday's meeting, so that we properly can address it and ask those questions.
I don't see any fast movement from the state to come down here and rectify Route 7's speeding. I mean, I understand this is a pressing issue, that we had, we had a massive tragedy here. This isn't the first one that's ever happened on that road, unfortunately, and I wish it was, the last one. But we have been pressing the state for 15 to 20 years about putting another light in front of Willow Springs, which would slow down that entire section of the road. This has been going on for a very, very long time, and we've been basically, by the powers in Hartford, okay, have been blocked from getting a traffic light on Route 7, because we're not a predominantly Democratic town. To be very honest with you, Hillary, that's what's happening.
I haven't seen any of those communications that you're referring to, so I wouldn't like to have this conversation. No, Tom, listen, listen, listen. I wouldn't like to, I would like to say one thing.
Go ahead.
That is why we needed to have the conversation, to hear all of the past six, 10 years of communications between the state and the town, and what you're thinking of putting in place immediately, because there are already things put in place immediately. Those officers are on that road right now, pulling people over a lot. So that was a decision made without this council. And I'm not against that, I'm just saying, this is the time where the council should be weighing in on these very important decisions, and there should be no wasting a day, not even a day, to talk about what is the best possible way forward to make that road safe. And we are not being included in that conversation.
Could I ask a question, Mayor? Is the council going to make a determination, or the police department, about what they do on the road? I don't know that...
It'll actually be, I'll defer to Randy real quick, but it'll actually be the state of Connecticut. It is a state road.
We have no jurisdiction over that road.
No, I mean, for checking the speed, we have our officers.
That's a police, that's a police operational issue that none of us are competent to make.
Right.
I mean, that, we fought that battle before.
I understand what you're saying, but I think that call belongs to them, Hillary. I understand what you're getting at.
Just another time to grandstand here. Can we get back to the agenda?
Yeah, let's do that.
All that asks.
I just want to respond to something you said.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, you said that we had to wait for the information. So my question is, why did you make a statement that said speed was involved if we were waiting for the information?
What information I was talking about, Alex, is speaking with the DOT on Wednesday, so that I can bring back what they're talking about, what their plans may be, and what we can do to help rectify the structural issues. That's what I'm referring to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I made a motion, and we had a second from Paul, Sal, Tom.
All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just minutes from last meeting, yet I have a change.
Okay.
Okay. So on page six and seven, it said Ms. Ram was glad to hear a change was in the works, and then the change, it should say, "But question the choice of doing nothing because of liability concerns versus implementing a remedy for a potential deadly situation for residents." I will give this to you, but I went and watched the recording, so it's verbatim.
All right. Okay, item five, mayor's comments. I'm sorry.
We're going to vote on that?
Oh, did you want to put that in an actual change? Oh, I thought it was a clerical. Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda as presented with Councilwoman Ram's...
With inclusion of her changes.
Yep, the changes, the minutes. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay, number five, mayor's comments.
Thank you. So first, for those that have noticed, flags are at half-staff here in town, and Governor Lamont announced pursuant to U.S. Flag Code, in accordance with a proclamation from President Biden, directing flags to be lowered throughout the country as a mark of solemn respect for the memory of U.S. Senator Dianne Feinstein. U.S. and state flags in Connecticut will be lowered to half-staff and will remain lowered until sunset on the date of interment, which has not been determined as of yet. Want to congratulate the New Milford Bulls 11-U football team. They moved to 5-0 with their win against Brookfield 33 to nothing, so great job to them. Gradulate the New Milford High School varsity football win over Pomperog 20 to 6 in the pouring down rain. They did a great job. Want to congratulate the New Milford High School band in Color Guard and band director Mr. Sizdek for the first-place win in the Trumble Classic. Want to also, want to thank the Ahold's, which I'll talk, the Arnold's, which I'll talk a little bit more during economic development, for their continued support for NuVance Hospital, New Milford Hospital. We did the ribbon cutting a couple weeks ago when it came to the cardiac rehab center and their new urgent care, which they've expanded. We continue on our infrastructure. Due to the rain, some of our roads that we've been working on have been a little bit delayed, but Buckingham Road's continuing on. These are all supposed to be completed by the end of October, weather permitting, so still, I know, still working on Buckingham and North, Old Northville, and working on Big Bear, Little Bear, and Bear Hill. They're continuing on those, and they're also working on Burnett as well. As far as the roofs on the New Milford High School roof, we'll talk a little bit more about that down below during the agenda. And then wanted to alert the council as our municipal elections, fast approach, which is November 7th, due to the fact that East Street School is closed, we're going to have to move the district, District 2, and that will be moved over to the senior center. So I've already talked to both voter registrars, the town clerk. Voter registrars are going to be sending out a letter to all of the voters, and we're also going to be sending one out on behalf of the town. We're also going to put an electronic sign, I think, starting tomorrow or the next day at East Street, to inform those that are driving by that there is a change where they need, need to vote, also through notify New Milford. We're also going to ask those Hertz Media to help put the word out as well. But that's going to be the, the district moving forward for now will be the senior center. Thank you to the Daughters of the American Revolution. They brought the wreaths across America exhibit to Patriots Way. That was a wonderful exhibit. For those that saw it, want to thank our veterans who were there, the DAR, everyone that was involved. It was a beautiful thing for those that were able to come down and see that. And also, you know, the wreaths they cost, Paul, was it $15?
Seventeen.
Seventeen dollars, and if you get a chance to donate, you can do that online, and specifically pick a wreath for a cemetery here in New Milford. That would go a long way, as we do have some veterans' graves that do not have one as of yet.
When you go on the site, you can choose St. Francis or Center.
So, you know, the more of us that could do that, the better. I believe up at St. Francis, there was a, how many, Paul?
We're missing about 300 wreaths at St. Francis. There's 425 wreaths at St. Francis.
We had the original number, it was 120, and so since counting, moved it up.
So if we could get the more people and they go to wreaths across America, the website, and there you can donate.
Right, right, it's easy to follow.
And then December 16th, people can come out and lay the wreaths as well?
Yes, there's a ceremony done at each, across the country, at noon, at the same time that they do it at Arlington, and then the, whoever is there can do that, and we love to have extra people, because some people sponsor wreaths, but they can't come to do the laying of the wreath. And feel free to bring your own wreath, I want to say that. I, you know, I realize, you know, part of that is to continue this program, but $17 could be a lot for some people, so if you just, if you have a wreath of your own you want to bring, that's fine too.
Outstanding. And then want to thank Ivan Schiffman and all the volunteers, they had to walk down to Alzheimer's on the Green this past weekend, and it was great to see the advocacy. As we all know, that's a very dreaded disease, and the more we can look towards ending that, the better for everyone. Want to thank the 190 participants who contributed 3,250 pounds of food. I was talking to Ivana. For this year, it was walk and drive a mile. Due to the weather, you could have done either or. And also, all of the staff from our social services, Big Y, First Congregational Church, volunteers. I know Chris and I, we were there to talk to some of the people, it was very nice of them to come out, and some of them have been doing it year in year after year, so thank you for that. Also, for those that haven't gone down and used the, the doors here on, on Church Street here, we have a new peace pole that's up around the corner. Want to thank the Rotary for that, and the peace pole has seven plaques, each with a different language, and it reads, "May peace prevail on earth." And for those that haven't seen it, you got to go down there and check it out, and thank you to everyone from the Rotary, and I hope I don't mispronounce Mansour's last name.
Hattery.
Hattery, thank you, as he's the president, for that.
Perhaps we can have our council meeting down.
That'd be great, kind of take a look at that. And then I want to thank Gary Goldring, Meredith, and Kaylee for their, this year's Rock the Block series, which was amazing to see all the people come down, enjoy some great music. Part of all of our event series that we've had down here, some of them we couldn't do due to the rain, which was, still want to thank Pat Hembrook for all of her work on the Apple Festival was canceled, then River Fest this past weekend was canceled, and, you know, all the sponsors that we had, Savings Bank of Danbury, you know, you had NuVance, Amico, Union Savings, Kramer Anderson Bank Street Theater, Kimberly Clark, Webster Bank, New Milford Fitness, Litchfield Distilleries, The Spectrum, to just name a few of these great organizations that, you know, sponsored, but unfortunately, with our rain event, you know, with the rains that we had, and speaking of Mike Boucher, in September, we had 15 inches of rain, and so far, I believe he told me, almost 50 for the year so far, which is amazing.
It's got to be full winter.
Yep, yep, so we don't get all that snow. I agree with you there. And then, as we spoke a little bit about just a few moments ago, and again, we'll speak more about this at our next town council meeting, which will talk about road safety, and also traffic enforcement and education, which will be part of this whole component on how we attack unfortunate tragedies that we have on all roadways. As I started last week, and again, our last meeting, we'll again do it every meeting, also every week on our social sites, talking about statistics, motor vehicle stops. Last year at this time, there was 973. This time, this time this year is 1,463, an increase of 490, which is up about 50%. Accidents last year was 670 this time this year, last year, 108 of them were in parking lots. This year is 658, with 106 in parking lots. That's a reduction so far of 12, which is about a 1% reduction, but one accident is too much, as we all know. I did speak with Chief Sarudo again today, and he gave me some interesting statistics, which he'll talk more about next Monday night, was we have the trailer, the speed trailers, we all know that we approved with ARPA funding, which gives him kind of car counts and speeds per hour. He was telling me that right now, going each way, so going down south and then coming up north, we're starting in the morning, you're looking at about 10,000 cars each way. So that's 20,000 a day.
Route 7?
Route 7 of cars.
From the center to the Brookfield line?
That's a major, that's a major, yeah, people are driving on Route 7, so where the sign would be placed, so if you got it at a, at a Beehive, it's going to pick up the statistics there. If they move it down past the high school...
I just wondered if we started one place, who got off before they got there.
There's, oh, I know, it's by that sign, 10,000 are going there and coming back about that.
Each direction, oh, the same people are going?
Could be, it could be different, but that's about what it is.
Yeah, I get you, yeah, not the same time.
And, you know, the continued enforcement will continue on, and Chief Sarudo will talk more about that Monday night. And then also, education, I met with Superintendent Parlato and Chairwoman Fallenback from the Board of Ed. There may be some additional educational things, opportunities that we... There may be some additional educational things, opportunities that we may be able to do. And as I said, a meeting with the DOT Wednesday, and then we're having our public meeting at 6:30. That's it.
Okay. Item number six, I'd like to move to approve the closure of the Southern Green Crossover for the Women's Club of Greater New Milford and the United Way Annual Operation Thanksgiving Food Drive. That would be on Saturday, November 4th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. to collect food for the Thanksgiving food baskets. This is pending traffic authority approval.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Item 6B, I'd like to move to approve both crossovers, Main Street North and Main Street South, for Saturday, October 28th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. This is New Milford Parks and Rec Request, that will be the trunk-or-treat that we have each year, and that, too, is pending traffic authority.
Any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Is there a possibility we can move number 10 up before we start number eight? I met these lovely residents from New Milford that came for the Fair Rent Commission, and they say they don't usually come out at night, so maybe they don't want to sit here.
Sure, if it's okay with everybody?
I'd like to make motion that we suspend the agenda and move item number 10 up to, prior to item number seven.
Thank you.
Everybody okay with that?
Greg? Oh, alls in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay, so, item number 10. I'd like to move that we take action on a, and approve a part-time fair housing clerk job description, and an updated job description was in our packets from the last one.
Good evening, council.
Second?
Thank you, Tom. Can you talk a little bit about it, Greg, for the town council?
Absolutely. So, we are required by the state of Connecticut to have a fair housing position within the town to support both our landlords and our residents. This part-time fair housing clerk is just to support the commission. So, this individual is going to put together the meetings, they'll set up the Zoom meetings, they're going to collect the information, they will disperse this information to the commission. They should be familiar with fair housing, as they'll be accepting applications, should be able to let someone know if an application is complete or if it's missing information. But really about facilitating the fair housing commission for the town of New Milford.
Katie?
Greg, so, I know you changed it to housing clerk, the first line in the job summary is still calling it an associate.
Okay, thank you for that. I do need to update that.
So, I have just a couple of questions also, I'm sure others might have the same. The, under essential duties, the second bullet point, which says that this person would serve as the primary source of education and assistance for residents regarding accessibility, predatory, blah, blah, blah. When we say the primary source of education, that, that means that that person will have support, and someone will be sure that what that person is using as educational is reviewed as well, because we do not know, based upon other things in this job description, that we will have someone who is that familiar with the housing thing. So, I guess I was going to say it about a lot of things here, but I think I'd just like to say that I think it's important that we say that the support for this clerk, number one, would be an attorney.
Correct.
Okay?
That is the plan.
Right, okay, it just doesn't say that, so I'm just, you know, wanting, I think somehow we should say that, because I, I think if I were reading this job description, I would say, well, you know, yeah, I could do that, and I wouldn't have clue. So, there's that. And then, create and post virtual meetings for the fair housing commission. What about if there's in-person meetings between the renter and the landlord, or in any other combination? Would they could also do that?
They would do that, although from what I've understood so far, I don't know that there's going to be a lot of in-person meetings. I do believe this would be.
Well, it could be. I mean, I don't want to rule it out. I know, I know why you're saying that, and that's what we see many do, but there are potentially reasons to have the attorney and, or whoever else, you know, the tenant or the landlord, or whatever, whatever is involved. I just want to make sure that we don't have, we're leaving something out of this. So, would this person also be in charge of setting up any meetings?
Yes, they would.
Okay, all right, good. And I think, I think that's okay, if you just, oh, and reports to the economic, I'm sorry, Economic Development Director. Now, Mayor, I suppose that's a question for you. I was surprised about that. Was that on the last job description that you did?
It was. So, the Economic Development Director is the mayor at this point, and Mayor, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, we were looking at the other, other ones from the other towns, that's how they pretty much have it.
Oh, because it says "and" the mayor. Now, I know your guy can get around a lot, but I don't know that we're going to split you in half here. So, shall we say Economic Development Director and/or? I just can't be "and" here.
You can do "and/or."
Just looking forward to the years, because we've all, we all know that a lot of times some of the things we write up are not really taken care of to the detail, so let, let's do that. You want to go ahead?
Hillary?
I just have one request to add fluency in written and verbal Spanish and/or Portuguese is highly desirable.
Absolutely. I thought we talked about that last time, no? Thanks, Hillary, for getting that.
Any other?
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to.
So, Greg, is this salary cut in stone? I mean, I just kind of, reading high school diploma or equivalent with at least five years of clerical support experience, bachelor's degree in social work or public administration, you think you're going to, somebody's going to come in with a bachelor's in social work or public administration for $20 to $23 an hour?
Part-time position. I wouldn't consider this to be a position I would expect someone to come in looking to do this full-time or to support, but for additional hours and for what the responsibilities are, you know, I had spoken with the mayor on this, I had looked at the union contracts, and just, it fit well into the clerical positions within the union contract, so that's where we put this.
So, in the clerical, I think you should take out the social work piece, because you're not going to get anybody that's going to come in for $20 to $23 an hour, even part-time.
Mary Jane, I'll just say something. I know two people who are part-time social workers for small towns, one of them happens to be in my southern Litchfield, and that she does work two part-time jobs. Now, this might be of more interest to her than the other part-time jobs she has, because it's up her alley, but is this a union job?
It is not a union position.
Oh, oh, when you said that, you got me.
Right.
So, yeah, I'm just saying, I know what you're getting at, but it's a potentially could happen.
You know, somebody would be totally underpaid. I mean, I just think.
Yeah, and then they wouldn't stay, but.
No, no, they wouldn't even apply for it. They wouldn't apply for the job. I just almost think we should take it out of there, because for $20 or $23 an hour, it's like ridiculous.
Yeah.
So, my suggestion would be, what's your estimated time to fill the position?
We need to do it as soon as possible.
So, so, by when?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow would be ideal.
So, by our next meeting, if you don't have viable candidates, we need to talk about the salary. That's what I would do.
Well, you'll know if, if you get somebody who tells you why they're not, what they want, and we can't fill it, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
But don't wait, is what I'm saying, right?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so, it's not cut in stone then?
No, I was just wondering, we do have a deadline to get the committee formed, because is that in progress? Because I had, I mean, we could almost just repurpose the Housing Partnership Committee and get it going.
So, the goal would be, if this is approved tonight, come back to the next meeting, because we're going to have to appropriate money. So, we're going to have to set up an appropriation for attorney fees for what this position is going to be, benefits and FICA and all the other monies, and then also for a secretary that'll be handling the minutes. So, I'm going to come back with a proposed budget for next, the next meeting, for you to look at and see if you approve. Once that's done, also at the next meeting, to have names for the committee that will be set up, and then if that's all approved, then look to hopefully, in November, have the first set of meetings, organizational meetings, so they can get going.
I see, so you have the names set up for the next meeting. Also, these are part-time by the hour positions, so if it doesn't warrant, you know, it's only by the volume that comes in.
Exactly.
We are not in New Milford, we're not, I mean, New Haven or all these other big towns, so our volume might be a little bit less at the beginning, may probably not, but I'm just saying, the budget is very.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Did you say a secretary? This person's going to do the minutes, type them up. This is the clerk, right?
This is the clerk.
Yeah, we wouldn't have any other clerical person. Didn't you, did you just say that?
I, Katie, I'm saying we're putting money aside for secretary, because I don't know the volume, I don't know how many people are going to be in this, I have no clue.
Okay, I'm just going on the, we went on to that Zoom that many, what even large cities do, is people call, they say what they want, and whatever, and that gets transferred over, and it's not like you got them piling in down the street. So, we don't know, I understand, you're putting money in for that, but it doesn't have to stay.
Yeah, but if we don't, we don't need it, we don't have to do it.
Okay, all right, yeah, because we had to put money anywhere, I can just say, but here.
Any other questions?
So, can you add the Spanish, Portuguese?
Yes, I will take care of each of the items that we discussed.
Thanks, Greg.
So, we have a motion in a second? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for attending. Is that what you wanted to hear? No, I had a feeling that wasn't why you were here, but you wanted to know more. Come to the next one. I didn't think they just wanted to hear about this. Okay, so, we're back to number seven.
Do you want to say something?
I just have one question. I've been a New Milford resident for seven years, and every time comes time around election, I see the Republican headquarters, but I never see anything from the Democrat headquarters. Is there not a Democratic headquarters in the town?
Sorry?
Is there not a Democratic headquarters in the town of New Milford? I see Republican headquarters here, but I never, and I see all the signs out, and I'm.
Why are you smiling? Not a headquarters. We have them passed, but we don't have one this year.
All right.
Honestly, we're not supposed to take questions from the audience during the meeting.
Okay, okay, they sat through it. Hillary, can they contact you? Hillary, can they contact you?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Contact me.
Yeah, Hillary, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks again for your interest.
Thank you.
Item number seven, I'd like to move to approve the appointment to the Library Board of Trustees for your term, Jennifer Harrigan. Her term would be September 25th, 2023, to January 31st, 2026.
Any discussions? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Thank you.
Item number eight is an update from Greg, Greg Ospow.
Good evening, this is the financial report for August. I am pleased to report that both the closing of last fiscal year, as well as the opening for fiscal year '24, went well. There was 100% cooperation from the town and Board of Ed, as there was no one in the system when I performed these operations. We also had a successful conversion of Munis from version 11.3 to 21.7. Training was made available to the staff on the new version, and there have been very few instances of transition problems from my perspective. There was also a transition initiated by Webster Bank regarding their Weblink platform that did not go quite as smooth. There was some downtime as the system was available for a day or two, as well as some transitional operating problems. These concerns have since been resolved, and it's business as usual. Interest rates have been held steady by the Fed at their last meeting, and we are currently getting 5.4% on our investment from STIF. Revenues. Revenues are overall at 46.4% collected. Tax collections are 55.2% overall, with current taxes at 56% collected. Most revenues are at or above the straight-line average of 15%. Expenditures. Expenditures on a cash basis are at 24% expended. The reason for the above-average expenditure rate is due to the prepayment of certain large categories of expenditures, such as pensions and bond payments. As in the past, these percentages will approach average as time goes on. There are a few areas of concern on the expenditure side of the ledger, namely Lake Lilinua, the Health District contribution, and hazardous waste disposal fees to HRA. There were timing differences within our budget process and the dissemination of information in those areas that will need to be addressed going into next budget year. In conclusion, revenues are at $53,223,694.28 against expenditures of $19,109,677.11, leaving a positive cash flow of $34,114,287.17.
Katie?
Greg, your, one of your concerns, concerns me. The Lake Lilinua? Why is it concerning?
There was nothing in the budget supplement from Lake Lilinua. We carried forward last year's balance. The bill came in, and it was $6,600 more than what we had budgeted.
More than?
More than, yes.
Okay, and the Houston Valley Health District, concerns are?
We, when our former health director left, I asked her what we should budget for the district. I told her that I was budgeting the $290,000 as we did for the previous fiscal year, and she indicated that that would be fine. Apparently, their process, their budget process is later than ours. So, the information wasn't disseminated, and the bill came in at $301,000.
As opposed to the $290?
The $290, so we're over by $11,000 in that category.
And then, and then, in speaking with Greg, one of the things that they were looking at, is we all know we need additional sanitarians for the district.
Right.
They're very rare, hard to get, is they were able to get another sanitarian, which is what we need, especially in New Milford.
Right.
So, that increased their budget more than what they thought it would be.
Okay, so the district got it.
Correct. And the, and the district also is component, not just New Milford, it's other towns.
Yeah, Southbury.
And then, working with Amy, the new director, we're going to see if we can get the budgeted numbers sooner than later when it comes in the budgetary process, because our budgets were, were one of the earlier towns.
Right.
When it comes to formulating the budget.
Okay. And then last, hurrah, I know that the fees.
When, when we migrated to the, to the district, it was assumed that all expenditures would follow. Apparently, that's not the case, and there was nothing budgeted for our hazardous waste disposal, of which our hosted event will be this Saturday. So, I mean, we have cash to pay, there's just no budget line, but going forward, we're going to have to. we're going to have to budget for those expenditures.
Do we have any idea what that's gonna be?
Last year, I believe, it was somewhere between $17,000 and $20,000. Previously, when we did, when we weren't partnered with HRRA, we paid as much as $56,000 to a company down in Virginia. Now we're paying, you know, considerably less with, with HRRA, and we do get a $10,000 credit, being a host community for that event. But we also have other, we partner with other towns. In case someone doesn't make this one, we partner with Brookfield, Newtown, Bethel, and Danbury. So if we have, New Milford has residents that they want, and they want to use these services and don't make it to New Milford for whatever reason, we get charged from HRRA for those participating.
I, I was not aware, and this is very interesting you say this, because someone asked me if they could go to another town.
They can.
Yeah.
HRRA town.
Yeah.
Like you said, Brookfield, and they can just go there with whatever if they can't make it to the one that we have. And then the town of Brookfield will charge us.
Yeah, when you go to the, to the event, there's usually greeters there, and they take your name and address and license down.
And do we do the same?
Absolutely.
Yeah, HRRA will bill us. We won't get a bill from the town, we'll get a bill from HRRA, so they coordinate everything.
Maybe going next year or whatever, we could, I know that's coming up soon, make that a little more obvious, because I said no, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Well, okay, thank you very much, Greg, I appreciate the update on this, all these.
Anybody have any more que, oh, sorry.
Greg, the money we get for the NIPS returnables, does that show up in your budget somewhere, or does that go?
No, that's on the balance sheet as a deferred revenue.
Okay, so when would?
I bring it in, I'll bring it in when the need arises to get something. I'll have to create a budget line like I did for the opioid settlement into the mayor's budget.
Okay, and as far as the high school turf replenishment? I'm still vague about where it is and where to find it.
I, I sent that to the council several months ago.
Maybe I'm reading something incorrectly.
Actually, council member Murphy was the only one that responded thanking me on that.
That's why I'm wondering, because I don't.
I sent that out.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And just to ask you to repeat what you just said, so the opioid settlement money is in the mayor's line?
That's why I'm bringing the funds into, has to be brought into the budget.
The $17,000?
It's not in there yet, right?
No, no, there's, there's money on the balance sheet, it's a deferred revenue, because we're running the operations through the general fund, and I, you know, you don't generally account, except that accounting principle does not allow you to bring the funds into the general fund if you're not going to use it in that particular year. If you do, you run the risk of having the revenue fall to the bottom line and lose it. So that's why I parked it in the, on the balance sheet.
So that we can then use it this year, right?
When, when the, on an ad hoc basis, if a bill comes in, the mayor will let me know, I'll bring in a use of deferred revenue on the revenue side, and I'll increase the expenditure in a particular line item, so it's balanced.
Did we, I know you were sick for some ti, there was some time you were sick and didn't come, but I can't remember if I actually got the, the final, actual versus budget for last fiscal year.
I sent that out to council, everybody should have gotten that.
But prior to any transfers out, just, just bottom line, actual?
Again, these are still un-audited numbers.
Right, so could you give us those, the, the actual number for 2022, 2023?
Again, it's, it's, it's subject to fluctuation, it's, it's more like 4.6 million.
4.6, okay.
4.6, 4.8, it's gonna change, because invariably you'll get audit entries that either increase or decrease those numbers.
And you could send that again to all of us, the final, the final?
You should have it, I'll send it to you, I've, has everybody received that?
I got it.
Yes.
Did everyone, I'll, I'll send you.
Maybe, yeah, just.
I'll send that out tomorrow.
Any other questions for Greg? Thank you, Greg.
Thank you very much, Greg. Okay, item number nine. I'd like to move that we set a date for a joint meeting of the Town Council, Board of Education, and Board of Finance to discuss the formation of a subcommittee to study a collaboration between the town and the Board of Ed on services and/or purchasing of joint items.
Just a second.
Thank you, so I did speak with Superintendent Parlato, I did speak with Chairwoman Follnback, and they agreed, they feel that this would be a good time for us all to jointly meet, jointly meet, to look at all opportunities. You know, we've been very successful, a couple of items is when we all went on the State Partnership Plan, which saved the town cost avoidance in the millions. We just did a joint purchase of copiers and printers, of which we saw some significant savings on the educational side and on the town side. And then we're also, as we all know, doing the Joint Energy Savings Program, of which it's about a $15 million project, I think 11 million of that is to the educational side, where we're looking at using the cost savings to pay for the lease. And I think it's a great opportunity for us all to participate and, you know, talk about opportunities.
Something for post-eds?
In a sociable way, in a calm, in sociable way.
Absolutely.
I would like to thank Dr. Parlato and the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance for agreeing to do this, I really look forward to the discussion.
So just to understand, we're trying to find cost, places where we can.
We're looking at.
Cost savings overlapping things, that's, that's your goal with this?
The goal is to look at everything, so looking at materials, looking at costs, looking at services, all of that we're looking at.
Like what kind of ser, what do you mean by services? IT or?
You could be looking at, you could be looking at facilities, you could be looking at IT, you could be looking at HR, you could be looking at all sorts of opportunities that may or may not work, we don't know. Could be, as I said, joint purchasing on, on products together, if we look at that. Or it may lead into a bigger conversation, could we regionalize? Could we look at maybe, you know, I'm making it up, so I don't want to say it, but another town, us all partnering together, and maybe that creates even additional economies of scale. But I think in speaking with Dr. Parlato and with Chairman Follnback, I mean, it's a great conversation for us all to have, to look at opportunities that could benefit all of us.
You know, giving you a simple example?
Exactly, before budget.
Right, which really, you know, it's just very simple, but you'll see why I'm saying this. There, you know, every restroom in all the buildings, both BOA and BOE in town, have hand washing, you know, soap. If I told you how many different kinds of soap, how many different kinds of dispensers for paper towels there are, you'd say, why? Because if you have a paper towel dispenser that's this wide, you can't put this side paper in, so it becomes a very, not, I don't want to say very, it is more expensive because we're not buying an economy, we're not even looking at economy of scale because we're in separate, we're in our own little silos. So that's just one simple thing that we could maybe bring up, and it could turn out, you know, to start saving some money.
When are we gonna do this?
That's why I just made the motion that we.
I know, but does anybody have any suggested dates that you're, you're talking about already, or?
I would look towards the end of October. Everybody feels the same.
Yeah. Is there a specific night that the BOE, BOAF?
Tuesdays and Thursdays, I believe, are not good nights for the BOE.
No, and they're not.
I know they have their regular means, and I think they have.
How about the alternate Monday?
Subcommittee of Operations, I think it's Thursday, but we can check.
What about the alternate Monday, we're the second and the fourth, what about?
The third?
The Monday.
The third Monday.
What's that, what is that date?
I can't do the third Monday.
Third Monday is the 16th. The fourth Monday is the 23rd, which is our meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Paul Verto. Isn't October 9th a state holiday?
Yes.
So we can't have a council meeting?
No, it's a 10th.
It's on the 10th?
Yeah.
And then you're proposing the following Monday for this?
Okay, no, we, I'm just saying, what about the alternate?
Putting out, putting out, they're throwing out dates.
I'm just throwing that out, got a date, throw it out. I just said, I only said the alternate Mondays.
But I think we want to give all the entities, the Board of Finance and the Count and the Board of Ed, time to.
Right, right, right. Well, you said the end of October, and I think Monday is a day that neither of they, neither of those two meet. I could be wrong, but.
You're right, you have the Sunday.
So you have the 30th, if.
And Tuesdays are their subcommittee meetings.
Right, I don't, yeah, so October 30th, which would be one, two, three, four weeks?
So Monday.
Yeah.
That works.
Is that R?
I would be normally getting my Halloween costume together.
There's five Mondays.
Oh, okay.
Two days.
Is that a night when children go out?
What, the 30th?
30th, the day before.
And then we give them enough time.
Oh, we have trunk or treat anyway, that's.
More in there, members.
What do you think, want to suggest it? And they can come back with another suggestion?
Correct.
Just seems to me Monday is the day that.
Let's pencil it in and save it.
Okay, all right, so.
So we're penciling in the 30th?
Yeah, Monday, October 30th, how's that?
So I, I just have a question, because it says on here, okay, for the formation of a subcommittee, so are we talking about establishing guidelines for the subcommittee? Or is that what basically, and how many members from Council, Board of Finance?
Find out if there's some commonality, and if there is, then get some people to.
And then what I, and obviously I'm just speaking as one person, right? But I kind of envision it as this group body of the Council, Board of Finance, Board of Ed. There may be things like, for instance, Katie was talking about joint purchasing. Maybe through this fuller body, you could have a couple people from Board of Ed, a couple people from Council, a couple people from.
As long as it's not whole.
Board of Finance.
Not a whole big maggot.
Because otherwise, the room gets out of control. Exercise, you don't have to have that in there right now.
Correct.
So we could strike that and just say, for the, you know, collaboration.
Setting the date.
Because not everybody might want to.
So would you like me to revamp it and say that I was moving to, so we select a joint, a date for a joint meeting of the Town Council, Board of Ed, and Board of Finance to study a collaboration, so we'll take that right out, right?
Yep.
Okay, to study a collaboration between the town and Board of Ed on services and/or purchasing of joint items, period.
And we're gonna look at tentatively October 30th.
Right, okay, tentative, tentative date to be Monday, October 30th. Chris, will you second that change?
Second, yeah.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions?
That was easy.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, item, it's your thing, B.
Just a brief update on East Street School. Jack just informed me that the hazardous study had just come in, so he's beginning to review that. He will be at our next Town Council meeting to give us an update on that. As soon as he's done, he's gonna give me a copy of which I'll send to all, all of us, the hazardous study. His recommendation for East Street School, moving forward, especially coming into the winter months, is he's just like, Mayor, the following recommendation is in response regarding the possible replacement, because there's been talk about replacing the boiler, right? So I'd asked him, I'm like, what are your thoughts on replacing the boiler for now? He said, "The boiler room has been identified mold, asbestos, and possibly other hazardous material present. Prior to replacing the boiler, the area would require abatement of mold and hazardous materials by a properly licensed and trained firm. The existing piping is in poor condition and may require replacement and installation. The boiler itself will require inspection and sampling for hazardous materials prior to removal. The interior heating system will require inspection, and the steam traps checked for operability. At this time, if the building is not going to be used, the most cost-effective temporary solution would be to drain all the water from the building and ventilate it." I checked with our Building Department and Fire Marshal, and neither had any objections. He says, "One note, we must make sure the building is unoccupied." So Jack will be coming at the next meeting and talking a little bit more about that, and include the hazardous study, because he just got it.
Could I ask a question, the draining and ventilation, are they gonna go ahead and do that?
Yeah.
Because there's no reason to wait to do that.
That's gonna be his recommendation to us, yeah.
Oh, so they're gonna wait till next week, or?
No, no, they're just letting you know that that's what they're.
Good, okay, good, well, that I can think is probably very stupid.
Also, the cost analysis, I spoke with Dean Petricelli, that should be next week. He was telling me that we should have that, as soon as I get that, I'll forward it to the Council. And what that is, is it's gonna give you a up-to-date cost of what it would, what it would cost to bring East Street up to code. So he'll be giving that to us. Kind of what's the next steps, obviously this will be on the next Town Council. Agenda, review, and study, and then look at the possible moves forward. Also, I'm having Grant do a video for inside the school, because we don't want lots of public going in there. So that the Town Council can see it, the public can see it. Then I'd like to set up a first public meeting, looking at a tentative, since we're doing in the October, for looking at the school and joint operatives, looking at another public meeting, because it's a lot for the Council of November 15th, and that's for public input on East Street School, to see what their thoughts are for that.
To do what?
To get public input on East Street.
Oh, the public, oh, the one we put off.
So they can come in and talk about what they feel East Street School should be used for.
Using the Zoom as a, rather than having them, having the public go there.
No, they can't go, they can't go into East Street.
So you're gonna have the.
Yeah, we'd look at doing a Zoom meeting.
That's Wednesday?
Yeah, 15th. And that's for East Street School. It'll be on the agenda, sorry.
December, December 20, the Board of Ed meeting, you attended, there was a long discussion about East Street. And at that time, you said it was not recommended to drain down the building, because there would be issues with regard to the plaster walls, but now that's changed.
Correct, because Alex, the plaster walls are already destroyed.
Got it.
That's why.
Okay, and I just have to ask. 2019? What happened that this didn't go anywhere?
Sure, so a couple things happened, we had, one of the things Mr. Unastis said, and I'm, oh, there you are, Mike, there was tons of, of public input because of that.
During that?
During that, absolutely. Then what happened was a couple things, one, the Board of Education was still in that building, and we couldn't do anything until the Board of Ed decided where they're going to move. As we're looking to decide those issues, we had COVID. COVID happened, then we met back with the Board of Education, matter of fact, Chairman Follnback and I went to all sorts of buildings to look at what's gonna be the best possible solution for the school, for the occupants, and how that all works. Then we had the fire. And in the fire, we had to work on that, and now here we are.
Wow.
And, and as I've always said, Alex, myself, this is way too big of a decision, these buildings, for one body, one person, one body, one group. It should be, should be the public, should be involved in the process.
What a shame to spend a $20,000 grant for this wonderful piece of information and then not have it be of any value.
But that information is still valuable.
It's still valuable, it's still.
So why, I mean.
It would have been, it would have had to wait anyway because COVID came, so we would have been putting it off.
You're sending, you got it?
He's gonna send it, yeah.
She can put it, she can put it in the minutes.
You wouldn't have done anything because of COVID anyway, nobody was going anywhere and doing anything, so.
But the public deserved to see this, that's.
But the public did see it.
They did see it.
Didn't that come about because of meetings?
Public input.
Yeah, they, they did.
They didn't see this report, this didn't get what happened.
It was never released.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's got great information and good ideas.
Because of COVID, what would you, I'm just gonna ask this just for argument's sakes, because I know you're trying to make an argument out of it. What would have happened if we did release it? I mean, you know, and nothing would have happened, nobody could go out and do anything.
That's not up to you, Katie, that's, that's not up to you, the tax.
No, I said it isn't up to me, I'm just saying is what difference would it have made?
I think the great opportunity we have, Alex, we're out of COVID. To some extent, we do have some that's popping up, as we know, that'll be for us forever. But it's, it's a great opportunity for us to all talk about it, see what we're going to do with this wonderful building, and have input from everyone.
So what you just said, unfortunately, I wish everyone could have heard that when this was really, when this was published, that as much as we would like to move forward with this, we have to put it on hold and we don't know how long, because of this, and then updates for folks. But this needed to be released, and people needed to know. I think that might have helped with all the upset now. Because they were left out.
It would also show on the condition of the building.
You might be right.
The condition of the building is.
Who was, who was left out?
Who was left, the, the citizens of New Milford?
There's been no decision made, Alex.
No, not in a decision, but in the expense of this and the results would have been helpful. And your update, similar to what you just said, would have been nice to hear repeatedly, because not everybody watches every meeting, and we don't have a newspaper to report anything. So why not tell people things upfront instead of after the fact, having a wonderful answer? I'd write, I'd like people to know as we're going along, as opposed to, to all of a sudden, and there were good things in this.
There are some wonderful things in it.
I know.
Absolutely.
Alex, it wasn't put under a, a cover. People knew about it because there were meetings and people came. But you do remember COVID, you were there, I, with me, and vaccination. That's what people were concerned about, quite frankly. I'm not saying that you're wrong, I'm not saying anything about that. I'm just saying that things happen and a pandemic came along. So.
And I, I think the great opportunity we have now, moving forward, is to look at the school, the condition it's in, what opportunities do we have to keep it either as a municipal space, a private enterprise takes it, a combination of both.
Right.
And then see all.
That's what's in this.
And see all of.
Right.
Uh, what can happen to that building.
But the Board of Ed was in the building, don't.
It's still.
I'm just saying, let's, if we're going to say some, excuse me, Hillary, excuse me, I was speaking. I said, if you're going to go on the record and on the tape to say this over and over again, I just want to interject and remind you that the Board of Ed and the chairman of the Board of Ed at the time was in discussion with the mayor about whatever was in there, and she too could have brought it out. And, you know, I, I mean, anybody was on the committee for it. So I think it's, it's just really, it's too bad, if you say so, I believe you, and I'm not saying you're wrong, but we can't do anything about it now, it's 2023, so.
Hillary?
At the time that this came out, I believe it was David Lawson, who was the chair, he's on record saying, um, in the newspaper article, he's on record saying, the Board of Ed, there's nothing that would, you know, that no plan should be, um, you know, not thought of.
Correct.
Because of the Board of Ed, they want out of that building.
Right.
This, this, this document also shows the state of the building clearly, you know, and so that's further point of understanding the, the sort of state of that building in 2019, we're in 2023, so.
So Hillary, just to clarify for the public that's watching, the state of the building was in some disrepair, but I can guarantee you, from December of this year till June 30th of thi, of this, of this year, the demise of that building was tremendous.
I was in that building on a tour, weren't we there together?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, did you, did you go into the kitchen?
It's not so remarkably different. Yes, I went into the kitchen, I went into the boiler room.
Did you see, oh, perfect, did you see mold there?
Um, no, well, it was, there's no way you could not see mold, right, the mold has been there for years, I'm sure.
So normally, when we see mold, we're supposed to disclose.
I, I don't know what mold looks like versus peeling paint.
Which is what we, which is what we, which is what, I'm just saying, which is what, when I found that out, which is what we did.
Anyway.
Okay.
Okay, can we move on?
Yep. Are you done with the item B, Mayor, of the update?
Yes.
We, we didn't have any.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, pardon me, pardon me, I'm not trying to be needy, but let's not set a precedent here.
Agreed.
Item C, update on New Milford High School roof.
So the high school roof, uh, the flat roofs have been completed. The contractor is, uh, offered the job as of right now. What we are waiting on now is for the bonding, uh, company that really has been, uh, really in charge since the contractor had been fired. They are waiting for some engineering designs to talk about, uh, what they're looking at is, can this roof, uh, be substantiated and completed with one pin? Uh, our, uh, message, both on the educational side and the town side, is the contract specifically said two pins, and that's what we're going to hold them to do. So they're continuing to do their engineering and design work, because that's what the bonding company had stated that they wanted to do, and right now, we're just waiting for those results to come back.
And the bonding company is the person that we wait for because?
Because they're the ones that are financing the whole, uh, operation, um, for repair and replacement. They're the ones, once the, um, uh, United, which was the original company, was terminated, they're the ones that took over this project, and, uh, they're the ones that want to see if there could be a one pin versus two. And ours is, our stance is more of a contractual one. You, you've said you were going to put two in there, your contractor, and that's what we're going to hold you to do.
I just think it's a good idea just to make that clear to everybody, because not everybody knows all these things. No, I think it's taking them that much time, because there's so many different points of data and so many different types of stress that could happen, that they have to do it a lot. A lot, a lot of testing. Because remember, the bonding company, they're going to give this, they're going to give this answer out, Paul, as this is okay. Now, whether we can say now that it isn't ever going to be okay if it's one, but remember, it's the bonding company that's paying, so they are working very diligently to be sure they dot all the i's.
But I thought that.
Yep, I'm sorry, Alex.
What about our insurance, do we have anything to worry about? What if something happens between now and?
Right now, we have what's called builder's risk. So in other words, there's no CO on that yet, until we find out how this all works, so we're insured.
Okay.
No, my only question was, I thought we already know for certain that there will be no warranty without the second pin, so I don't know why everybody's waiting on this test.
So the, so the bonding, so the bonding company, Hillary, it's very, it's a large company, they're saying maybe we'll warranty it.
But that's, they can warranty a product that's not.
They sure can.
They could.
They're on the hook for the money.
They're on the hook for the money, they say, that's what they're saying, maybe we'll do that.
So it's, it's just an option, and because they're the money people.
Yep. Yeah.
We have to go through all the steps. Right, Attorney Joe, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name. I forgot my first name.
So it might be acceptable to have one pin, they might accept that?
What, what the, what the bonding company is saying is, is they want to see all of the data, they want to do updrafts, they want all this engineering design work done, that they're, they're paying for, and that their thoughts were, where if this could meet all of that, that this was overdesigned, that's what their thoughts are. This was an overdesigned project, so if this meets the criteria, then, then you should be able to just use one pin and we're done. But my conjecture is the same, Randy, who is here, and both Dr. Parlato and the Board of Education is, you contractually, your, um, company that you insured, contractually obligated themselves to two pins, and that's what we want to hold you to, is to two pins.
And the new school building committee also agrees 150% with that. So, yeah, so it's unfortunate.
So we wait again.
Junction.
So we're just waiting for them to come up with the.
No storm comes.
Design. Well.
Well, we're covered with the insurance, but the.
Doesn't matter, human beings.
Well, what they're going to say is, we've had storms already here, we've had some storms with some significant wind already, and look what happens. But to me, it says two pins, should be two pins in there.
Right, right.
Yeah, flies off, and there's only one pin in there, and somebody gets decapitated.
Well, not only that, it could, it could just mean that then some section of the roof would have to be replaced, and you'd have to get back up there, I mean.
No, I, I'm more about, you know, it, it flies off.
I know, the way it's made.
Yeah, it's like two pins.
I will say, just as, just as a point to, so we don't get too, I mean, it's not what we want, it's not what we want to accept. It's not as if one pin is a, have, I mean, it's been that way, it is a hazard, it is supposedly strong enough, but that's not what we asked for, it's not what our contract says. However, the data could come out saying that it is. And if it does, that's, well, again, we already know what we want.
Yep.
But don't think it's, it's not like it's loose moving around. So item D is the last one here, Mayor, on nine.
Uh, economic development is real quick, is, uh, this is manufacturing month, and, uh, being part of, uh, being a manufacturing ambassador. There's a lot of things going on within, uh, the state. On October 3rd, at Central Connecticut, they're going to be do a Chambers Manufacturing Outlook, and, uh, on October 3rd as well, they're going to have the Manufacturing Roundtable. Mott Corporation is going to sponsor that. October 4th, UConn's doing their Clean Energy Summit and their School of Engineering. On October 4th, offshore wind press conference with Governor Lamont. On October 4th, Manufacture Connecticut's annual dinner. On the 6th, UConn Materials Separations Conference. On October 6th, Manufacturing Day Press Conference with Governor Lamont. Uh, on October 10th is a Legion Open House. On October 11th is the CBIA Manufacturing Summit, Made in Connecticut. On October 11th as well is the CHAPCO Open House. The 12th is the CTMA event for New England Tool Company. On the 13th is the, uh, HUB, they call it Hubcap Wallingford Event. On the 17th, Pratt &amp; Whitney is going to do their Supplier Conference. October 18th, Quinnipiac University is going to do their Supply Chain Class. And October 19th, Connecticut Power and Energy Society is going to do their Fall Conference. And, uh, Katie?
Could you have somebody take that, you just said, that whole calendar of events, and put that up, um, on the town website?
Sure.
And perhaps on Facebook, because there, there, that's, there's a lot of really good things that someone could attend. And I think.
And a lot of different groups should share.
Very much, yeah, and that would be very, I mean, put it on the economic development, but if it was on Facebook, then we could share it too.
And again, uh, thanking, uh, the Arnhem family, Dr. Kavation and NuVance, as they have expanded their urgent care facility and cardiac rehab. And in speaking with Dr. Kavation, the next thing they're going to be looking to do is, is do a, a lot more one-day surgeries there as well, which will make it a real big destination point, as it already is, but continues on for New Milford, a big anchor. Uh, and talking with some of the businesses that are looking to maybe come to New Milford, the hospital is a big thing, uh, for not only them, but for their families that they would be bringing in to town. I want to congratulate Kevin and Lori Lane, they're the first business in the pop-up New Milford, and that's located now on Ann Company and Bank Street. And I want to thank Bobby Jobiers, she's the owner of Ann Company, and she, uh, has a lot of experience with, uh, companies, she's going to be doing some mentoring as well, and, uh, also the Economic Development Corporation. Uh, New Milford unemployment stats for August 2023. Uh, our labor force is currently at 14,927. Employed residents are 14,486. Unemployed is at 441, so we're at about 3%. It's a little bit lower than a lot of, uh, the area, by, by about a tenth of a point or so, uh, but it's good to see the resiliency, uh, of our economy here. Uh, as I sit on the Northwest Regional Workforce Board, speaking with Ca- Kathy Awad, uh, we're working on the, uh, healthcare, where you're looking at possible internships for high school. Uh, they're very successful in the Waterbury, uh, area. Uh, and speaking with NuVance, we're going to try and set that up, uh, through the schools with Dr. Parlato, and, uh, looking at alternative paths. Uh, and speaking with Dr. Kavation, there are, for instance, there are some radiology positions that pay very, very, very well that don't need, uh, uh, all these college degrees, so it's a good entrance point. Also, uh, we're looking at, uh, working collaboratively with some of the Waterbury and New Milford Manufacturing, uh, to provide some scholarships and some internships there as well. And I will be updating, uh, the Council probably in the next couple of meetings as to where we are with those.
I'd like to bring up one thing that, now, since we're talking about economic development, I think you're all familiar with, or out there, Husatonic Habitat for Humanity, and, uh, they do build and also rehab, they build houses and rehab homes for, uh, first-time homebuyers to come in. They need to put in sweat equity, it's, uh, but they are having a workshop, they had one last year, and it's a workshop specifically for first-time homebuyers. And it's going to be at the Pettibone, uh, building, uh, on the Social Services wing there in the room. It'll be Zoom or in-person. It's Thursday, October, let me just look at my calendar, make sure I got this, October 19th from, I believe, uh, 5:00 to 7:00, or 5:30. So it's on Facebook, um, and it's on lots of places, the Social Services.
Habitat website as well.
Habitat website, and they did this last year, and it is a very interesting workshop, because it, it gives you a lot of tips, if you want to buy, if you're a first-time homebuyer, uh, doesn't mean it's just for you if you want to get into Habitat, but I will put a plug in for them. They are rehabbing, uh, a unit at Canterbury Arms, it's got a garage, it's pretty nice, two bedrooms, two baths, and there are two homes, they already have a couple, in New Preston, on, um, off of Magat Road. They're beautiful houses, and they're looking for people to move into them. Unfortunately, there's no bus line up there, but if you have a car. Habitat for Humanity, Husatonic Habitat for Humanity, they're all over the place. Um, if you have an interest in that, anybody watching, uh, please. It's a great organization, they work, uh, to help people, and, uh, just this year, we had three people in New Milford move in to, uh, places. United Way, uh, has funded them and helped them, as the town has, so, uh, I'm just, that's why I happen to know there's three people. But it's really wonderful to see that people are so happy when they get there, and they put in their own sweat equity to get there, so. October 19th, that, this is a great workshop. That's all I got to say.
Are the Economic Development Corporation meetings public? Can people go to those?
Absolutely.
So when and where do they happen?
They're on, Stephanie?
Are they on the calendar? I, I've never seen one.
The board meetings are the, in the quarter, see, they're in the quarter, the fourth Thursday of the month, but typically not, they're not public, but.
Fourth Thursday, and where do they hap, where do they take place?
Uh, here.
In this building? Oh, right here, okay.
Downstairs, oh, they go.
Mr. Mayor, so as part of your report, um, I like hearing about the housing units that are being built and where their status, for example, the one up in Wardman that sits just beyond the fields.
Yes.
It's been there in the works for a long, long time, is there any status, any?
I can get an update for you, Alex.
I think that would be good, because.
I'll find, I'll find out.
That just came up in the Housing Partnership meeting on Thursday, um, that they, they are, we think, the closest to taking applications, and as a matter of fact, they may have already taken some, that was the question. Uh, as well as the one out by Harrybrook.
Right.
The one at Harrybrook's already full.
Yeah, they, they had people before they finished, Lanesville, right.
They're, they're already, they're full?
Lane's full, I believe, is full already.
Do we know how many children?
Um, I do not know.
I don't know.
I could, I don't, I don't know if the association or the management company would give me the information, but I can ask. Sometimes they'll, they'll give you like a rough estimate, I can ask, but sometimes they'll, they'll say, we don't want to tell you.
Um, but they're receiving funding, so they have to sell some.
I don't think the Lanesville's receiving any subsidies, no.
Oh, okay.
There is, they, they, they did affordable housing in 830G, which means that they, which means that they have to, for their rooms, for a certain segment of the units would have to be affordable.
Right, and that is kept on record.
Yeah, the affordable, but not the number of kids that are in the unit.
Maybe we could find out.
Yeah, I'm saying, I could ask the management company.
That's a good, that's a good statistic. As you say, with all the hundreds of units that are going to become available, that we would have, you know.
That are approved.
Right.
Right.
At some point.
Some are being built, some haven't been built.
Do you know anything?
Any other, any other questions?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.